Good evening, I call to order the Public Forum of the town, Special Town Council Meeting on Monday, June 19th, 2017. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. First speaker on the list is John Rich. Please excuse my cough.
John Rich, 68 Willow Avenue. Back in 1999, I was laid off from my job. It caused a significant crunch in my family's budget. But we figured it out, and we moved on. And then in 2014, I went out on full disability. My household income was literally cut in half. But again, we figured out our budget, and we were able to move on. Sometimes you just don't have the dollars that you want to spend. And that's my point, is the fact that we as a town cannot give another dollar. Now Scott Posner, Farrington Posner, has shown us that there can be cuts made that allow to give the Board of Education a significant amount. Some say those cuts are too deep, and I understand that. But that's where negotiation and compromise should come into play. And for every dollar that you put back into the municipal side, it has to come from the Board of Education side such that the mill rate stays flat. We just don't have it to give you anymore. Now I know that the mayor's budget has a tax increase, and he likes to play the game of talking about, "Well, it's only $2 and change every week from somebody's pocket." Let me tell you, Mr. Mayor, if you've ever been in the situation where you had to go to a CoinStar machine and roll out your pennies, nickels, and dimes just so you can see if you have enough money to put in your gas tank to go to work, well, like the old saying, maybe you need to walk a mile in my shoes, hobbled foot and all.
Okay, the next speaker is Gerald Gray.
Good evening, I'm Gerald Gray of 29 Shoreline Drive. In addressing the issue of Stratford's budget, I want to revisit some of the points I made in a white paper I wrote which is titled "Quid Pro Quo Corruption, Cronyism, Patronage, Favoritism, Nepotism, Et Cetera, Et Cetera, Et Cetera: Brief Summary of Some of the Ways in Which Stratford, Connecticut Is Robbing Targeted Prey." How town of Stratford, politicos, civil servants, attorneys, contracted parties, and social service agents at all are collusively, self-servingly robbing targeted prey. Citizens, property owners of Stratford, of their civil rights, their property, their assets for transfer into their pockets and own coffers. In this paper, I paralleled the operations of town of Stratford's revenue generation to the same predatory antics being pulled by the state of Connecticut and the maneuvers by state legislators in their preying upon state of Connecticut residents to take money from the residents so as to line the pockets of their cronies, special interest groups, state union members, civil servants, and politicos. My point in speaking here tonight is to remind us all what is rarely being addressed, that being the parallel antics of the state and the Stratford in grabbing massive amounts of residents' money so as to go into the pockets of the judges and lawyers here in Stratford, just as being done at the state level. Our sadly departed hero, George Mulligan, so devotedly exposed and revealed how much so much of the money, the town's attorneys, town contracted attorneys, and town connected attorneys are raking in literally millions of dollars via the raping of residents via municipal predation. I myself have been attending many of the monthly meetings of the over-three-dozen town of Stratford commissions and agencies whose members are all mayor-appointed cronies. I am usually the only member of the Stratford public in attendance of these meetings of the mayor's cronies, and I am repeatedly appalled in witnessing the flagrant and blatant self-serving hubris and arrogance demonstrated by these town agency and commission members, in particular, the Stratford town attorneys. There is not even the pretense of disguising the predatory goal of finding and gauging in ways to take the property and assets away from Stratford residents for IRA, which is involuntary redistribution of assets, for going, the purpose of going into their own and fellow cronies' coffers and pockets. I will sum up by saying Connecticut has the highest percentage of all 50 states of residents fleeing to relocate to other states. I believe town of Stratford is trying to match that ranking by having the most Stratford residents trying to flee to relocate to places elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mark Schek.
Mark Schek, 161 Birdseye Street. Another year here, I know what to say, there's no councilors really to talk to, except you four, right? What do you say? All our citizens are hurting. We have lots of senior citizens, yet, over and over, tax increase, tax increase, tax increase. For what? The BOE that has an $8 million oil budget, yet most of the buildings are gas-powered? How do you keep doing these things, Beth looking mystified? Go through those spreadsheets. So it's amazing to me, over and over again, also you saying last year, what, two years ago, a zero-based budget, I'm not going to raise your taxes, yet you did.
I did not.
You did. I think all of us here say that you did. Hopefully in November, we will never deal with you again. But over and over again, the government of Stratford is broken and has not done anything for the citizens. You look at the ballparks on Mode, look at Birdseye Dock, the grass is that tall. All around the town, it looks like it's falling apart. And why? We give you guys lots of money, and yet, what's happening? Our property values are going down. I can't sell my properties even if I wanted to. We're getting apartment buildings where it's going to be a mess, yet we're told, "Don't worry, it'll be okay." Do the right thing, go against Harkins' budget, have a real budget like Scott's budget. And well, you know, I don't expect too much, but at least my words are on record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Steve Tocagna. I'm sorry?
Steve Tocagna, 410 Henry Ave. I have four kids in the Stratford public schools. One more will be there in a couple more years. When the ones that are already in school ask me what all this arguing is about, why I'm blowing numerous Mondays to come down here and listen to this argument until the wee hours of the morning sometimes, what I try to explain to them is, this is about how our town is going to work or not. I explain to them that some of the fears they had coming up in school about programs being cut and losing different opportunities, that this was not actually the meeting for that, that that's a Board of Ed issue, and that that's where their anger should be directed, and that that's where they should go. That said, we've now had numerous iterations of a budget passed to get shot down by an outgoing mayor with no further vested interest in this town. I'm up here now to ask everybody to please, get the budget done. The Board of Ed has gotten their big increase last year, they're asking for another one this year. The entire debate this year is not even about whether or not they get an increase, it's about how much of an increase. If my kids ask me for 20 bucks to go down to the store and I gave it to them, and they come back a couple minutes later and ask for another 10 bucks, and I say, "Why? What did you do with the first 20?" And they can't answer me, I'm not giving it to them. Apply the same common sense to this practice. Let's get it done, let's move on as a town. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Stephen Roguskas.
Steve Roguskas, 94 Noble Street. Thank you for the four of you that are here. I'll be addressing the whole council. Here we are again, we all sort of hope the third time will be the charm. As an outsider looking in, it seems pretty clear to me that four of you are just supporting whatever the mayor puts up. He makes minuscule adjustments to a budget that the council majority has rejected twice already, and he hopes for a different outcome. Meanwhile, the six councilors in the majority have submitted several budgets that all have significant differences. They are working hard to try and find some sort of common ground while remaining true to their admirable goal of a zero-tax increase. I hope they don't get to the point where they just figure, "Why bother even trying anymore?" We have all heard criticisms of their budgets from you. We've heard one that was presented in the wrong format. Well, guess what? It can be reformatted. We've heard there were math errors. Some of the times that's been said, it turns out there weren't any. Other times, God forbid, humans made mistakes, mistakes that can be fixed. But I personally have never heard any true response to the concepts behind these budgets. Instead of sitting back trying to find reasons to say no, maybe take a close look at what your colleagues are proposing. I'm sure there are cuts you would refuse to make, but I can't imagine there aren't some cuts in there that at least some of you could live with. Cuts that would make you say, "You know, that's not a terrible idea, we could do that." Or, "Well, you can't do that, but what if we made a cut over here?" That's where dialogue and compromise starts, when both sides realize they're not perfect, when they realize that they're not right and the other side wrong, but rather they are two sides looking at the problem differently. There are a lot of people in Stratford just barely getting by these days. They get monthly or weekly checks, and the money is gone before the next check comes. No one in that situation wants to hear that it will only cost them an extra $20 a month, not to get more, but to keep operating as is. You know who else doesn't want to hear that? A person who's fortunate enough to own a nice home with some property, a person who may be asked to pay an extra $1,000 or more per year, for nothing. Thank you to the six councilors who have held together and insisted that taxes remain flat. The mayor and the rest of you need to tighten the town's belt before you ask the people of Stratford to do it for an eighth straight year. Almost every department, including the Board of Education, can make do with a little less. Find the cuts, work together, and solve this problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Joe Paul. Next speaker is Joe Paul.
Where is everybody?
I should just say, I just want to answer that briefly. A number of people are at the Building Needs Committee meeting, this is a special meeting.
All right. Well, I want to, first of all, thank you for the time to speak today, and want to bring up a couple of things before I sit down. Joe Paul, 47 Harborview Place, for the record. I'm going to talk about a letter that I presented to this town council back in 2014, and I'm going to read it, so it puts things in perspective. On several occasions, concern was expressed when $5.6 million was added to the Water Pollution and Control Authority budget for land acquisition after the budget was already voted on. This matter essentially violated the town charter, and is clearly a cause for everyone to be alarmed. At a subsequent town council meeting, the matter was addressed by then Attorney Bishop, who explained that this $5.6 million entry was a clerical error, and agreed to remove it and reflect what was in the approved budget. Now this action was, and is very unacceptable, and does not get to the core of the solution. We request how, we're questioning how a clerical error of such a large dollar amount of $5.6 million could have been, could have ever occurred. In addition, we feel that there may be other internal controls within the administration that may need to be reviewed and improved upon. The numerous non-contracted salary increases and promotions has also created major public concerns with this administration. Therefore, on behalf of the concerned citizens, I am calling for the town council, at the time, not this town council, but the town council in place, to take immediate action and initiate a full-scale investigation into the matters that are causing these discrepancies. This initiative should be conducted by an independent audit firm selected by the State Treasurer's Office. Their assignment should be to review the town's internal controls by a forensic audit, and review all other internal controls, and also include a review of the salary administration practices. The town council has a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of the town of Stratford to ensure the integrity of the town's financial systems and personal management. The council's failure to do so will only serve to further erode public confidence in the council. Now, I presented this letter twice in that year, and both times, all I heard was the sound of crickets coming from that council. Those members at the time included people like, names are Joe Kubeck, Peter Massey, Matt Catalano, Stephanie Phillips, Jason Santi, Brian Dempsey, Ken Poison, Craig Budnick, James Connor, and Paul Hoydeck. Point I'm making is this, those budgets during those times were rubber stamped. I think the hardliners has come across something that would have been found out about back in 2014 or 2015, had we done the audit and had the council at the time address some of the internal controls. Because we're rating enterprise funds, and I think the hardliners found a way to stop rating the enterprise funds and show true revenue, and offset it by true expenses. And I think that's the bottom line here. So when we look at the budget, look at the budget for what's really revenue versus what's really expenses, and create a real budget this time, and don't copy what the previous councils have done. The town can't afford rubber stamping any longer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dave Meredith.
I'm here because I'm very, very disappointed in the actions that have been taken by the mayor. We've had two budgets passed, six to four, split, and twice the mayor has vetoed it. When do the people get cared about? When do they stop trying to take advantage of the people of town of Stratford? Where is 50,000 people? They don't care about us? They don't want to care about if we can afford to live, we can afford to pay our rent, pay our mortgage, whatever the case may be? We're out there on the string now, waiting to see what's going to happen. Are we going to get, are we going to get a budget passed? Are we going to go on, we're going to work on fiscal '16, '17? You know, I really think the mayor has overstepped his bounds by vetoing this just to show that he can do it. Now it's time to get to frickin' work and do the goddamn job.
Okay, the next speaker is Sandra Zalik.
Sandra Zalik, 208 Husatonic Avenue. Mr. Ken, Ms. DePonte, Ms. Manis, thank you for your time and attention. It's very sad to me to see only three people listening to the public. It appears that that meeting has ended, and they're all still sitting and they're chatting, which is disrespectful to us, so I do thank you all. I don't have a lot of comments, you guys have been listening to me for two months on my budget thoughts. One additional thought I'd like to say is that I looked through the numbers that Mr. Ken has, I looked through the mayor's proposed cuts, I only find one number, $109,000 from the Short Beach Golf Fund that matches. I just, I think it's really symptomatic of what's going on in our town, that we're not talking to each other, we're not listening to each other. Surely, in all those cuts proposed on both sides, we could have found more common ground. One number out of all of those, Mr. Ken's papers have about 40 cuts, the mayor's new proposal has a number of cuts, maybe 20, but one number between all those, that's sad. The other thought I want to share that I haven't heard anybody say yet, we talk a lot about at the Board of Ed, we don't have a lot of visibility to it, the 7% increase that they received last year, I hope we all recognize that 7% is still there. The 7% jump last year continues into this year. They still have all that money, but they keep, we keep hearing, "It's a cut, it's a cut, we need more." So let's remember, they got a 7% last year, and that still exists. So the other comment I want to make is on the CIP, CIP and CEP, I hope we're not passing that tonight, there's just, unless we amend it, we talk so much about what percentage of our budget is debt service, and yet, we want to add another $15 million in debt to our town. In my opinion, unless it's necessary maintenance on assets that we currently have, I hope we see our way clear to, you know, just putting all that on hold until we can get our financial house in order. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just going to get the next sheet.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tom Yem, 746 Broad Street. More than three years ago, an organization I co-founded, Four Stratford Network, began to publicize the whole issue of the WPCA, that the mayor was trying to sell it, and that in the meantime, town governments had, for some time, been skimming money from the WPCA Enterprise Fund. Subsequently, we've learned that this skimming from enterprise funds has happened to a number of them, including the Railroad Fund, which we mostly think of as parking, and EMS, and possibly others. So I believe that one of the most important issues before this council this summer is putting a stop to enterprise fund skimming. Now for many of you out in the audience, you may wonder, "Well, what the heck is that?" Enterprise funds, the analogy might be robbing from Social Security to pay for this year's expenditures for something else. I'm not going to use the word lockbox, but the idea is, certain things are supposed to be kept separate. So one of the issues that we publicized way back in 2014 and 2015 was, in addition to not selling the WPCA, establishing proper procedures so that it can operate as a standalone entity, which is what it's supposed to do in the first place. So with regard to this year's budget negotiations, I consider the enterprise fund integrity to be non-negotiable. Whatever budget this council comes up with should have no monies flowing from enterprise funds to make up for revenues that don't otherwise exist. I believe councilperson Tina Manis has made this very clear in a number, in a number of forums. The second point that I would also make as a non-negotiable item is no change to the tax rate. Flat tax, the mill rate from last year should remain the mill rate for this year, not because it's a magic number, but because, as I've posted online, some of you may have seen the chart I created, we need to break this fever, we need to flatten that out and stop the tax increase once and for all. Many other towns in the vicinity have done that. So, no enterprise fund rating, no tax increase, that leaves the other two elements, the Board of Ed funding, and the town hall funding. And council can get together tonight, and however long it takes, and negotiate what cuts need to come from this side or that side, and I'm tempted to say, "I don't even care." I do care. But whether they come out of this salary or that program, as long as essential services are not challenged, that's where the negotiation should take place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Laura Dobus.
Hi, I'm Laura Dobus, 1460 Elm Street. Oh, can you hear me? Okay. Okay. Hi Scott, welcome. I was going to say, I'm sorry to see only three of you here, but I'm happy to see four of you now. 1460 Elm Street. I'm not coming here with any figures, I'm not coming here to debate the budget. I didn't even actually want to come here, I was actually very happy living on Elm Street watching this storm come in, but I felt my need to come here and say the following. Now all four of you have known that I volunteered on your campaigns, and I worked really hard, and I have a lot of friends in the community have welcomed me and joined me in doing this. And what bothers me is this process that we've been going through with this budget, and it worries me that as a community, where are we going in November? I mean, what are we going to do? Is this going to be mass chaos with more mailings and more filth with our neighborhoods? You know, I rode a bicycle around Lordship with you, you know? I walked doors with you and you, and I, you know, I mean, I think we have to be bigger than this, and I'm sorry that some of our fellows from the other parties aren't here right now, but rather than talk about this budget and talk about all this negativity that's going on right now, I think it's ridiculous, and I think we're probably going to end up with something that the mayor is going to continue to veto, and we're going to be stuck with this thing that we were stuck with last year, and maybe we have to accept that, but what we don't have to accept is where we're going forward. And as a citizen who has been an avid volunteer for over 10 years and a candidate, the only reason I felt the need to speak is that I've been sickened. Sickened to the point where I want to leave, I want to not volunteer, I want to leave my party. I've watched my party divided in so many ways, but I've watched the town divided even further. And it scares me that this budget argument with the Board of Education, and with the mayor, and with our, both of us, the Republicans, the Democrats, everybody, how are we going to present ourselves in November to people that are just out there, living their lives with their kids, going to school, trying to hang out at Short Beach? I mean, I hate to be like silly and irreverent, but I think this is something that we all have to think about when we're going forward. Who are we going to present ourselves as? Is this the divided party that we want to present ourselves as? Several of you have already said you want to run for office again. Well, you're going to have opponents in other parties, within your own perhaps. It's just been so ugly, and I go home at night sick, watching this, and I watch it again, you know, on the YouTube and on the Channel 79, and I'm like, "Oh my God, these are people that I love that are fighting, people that call me on the phone and ask me to choose between one and the other." This cannot work if we're going forward. Anyway, thanks, sorry.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dobus. And that's all of the people who signed up.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I walked in a little late. I thought the meeting started 7:30, according to...
No, this is the public forum.
What time was that scheduled to start?
Quarter to seven.
A quarter to seven? Are we also doing the 45 minutes?
The town council meeting is immediately following the public forum.
So we're not giving it the 45 minutes as in the council rules of procedure?
Well, no, I can actually write it up as saying "public forum," so, and the council meeting starts at 8 o'clock or immediately following the public forum.
Okay, because I think a lot of people think the public forum starts at 7:30, from what I was, when I was talking to people.
Was the post-it correctly?
It's posted correctly.
It was posted correctly?
It is posted correctly? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody who has signed up. Okay, so... It's up to you. Right now, there's nobody signed up. I don't know, I can't see what time it is.
I'll put it in record now. I'm going to be there.
Is there anyone else that hasn't signed up that'd like to speak?
So, Tina Manis, 315 Fox Hill Road, and I'm putting this into record now, in the essence of time for later. I represent the 10th District. Many of my constituents have reached out to me thanking me for our fortitude and perseverance. Some folks have also expressed some dismay regarding the cooperation and the efforts between members of the council. I understand their concerns. I want to put on record officially, this is, for me at least, although the no-tax increase, which is the no-tax increase that seven other towns around us are currently celebrating, that's not really the crux of the issue. The issue for me, and the issue that I have been speaking about, and really haven't taken a forward role in it... a forward role in until this weekend, is the idea of revenue. In the budgets put forward by Mr. Can, Mr. Can and Mr. Young, Mr. Farrington Posner, your revenues exist at $216 million, give or take, a little bit more, probably 216.3. The budget put forward by the mayor to begin with was a $220 million revenue. The budgets that have been coming amended are now at 219. There were some cost adjustments. Some of the adjustments were in tax liens and revenues. For example, each year, we collect, over the last years that are in the budget book, $900,000. This year, it was projected at over a million. I want to know how you can make that kind of projection, and these kind of projections exist in revenues all over the revenue lines. The interesting part about this is that when we began, and Mr. Chase and I sat across from Financial Director Sue Collier at the time, and asked about tax relief services and the revol, it was, we turned into the revolving sewer fund, which is labeled as tax relief, we were told that that's, "Oh, that's for elderly tax relief, that's revenues, let's go on to expenditures." It is not in expenditures. The issues with this budget are not in expenditures, guys. It's in revenues. The idea that we are not starting on a solid foundation with revenue, and guess what? It happened last year, too. We didn't catch it last year. We tried for, with Mr. Dumas' budget, a little bit, but it was such a drastic difference that it really didn't go through, and these issues with the enterprise funds are part of that. So, the revenues from Railroad, the revenues from EMS, the invented revenue that came up, that popped to the surface, because just like when you buy a new car, if you owe money on your old car, the negative equity pops to the surface, that, I am sure, is what happened when we separated the medical accounts with EMS and the revenues, and we separated those enterprise funds. That negative equity showed up. How many other instances are like that in that budget? How many other places are we overshooting revenue? And I'll be honest with you, counselors and EMS that were around during that time have mentioned, and I'm almost done, have mentioned that those line items were specifically inflated to give more money to the town to move around and to give raises and to do all that stuff because we were financially unstable. We are living in a Ponzi scheme. We are inventing revenue. We have inflated our budget, and I am devastated because personally, this is the kind of thing that when I purchased my home from my parents and I started looking at their finances, I saw how many other people in our town are living this way. The government can't exist this way. We have to balance the budget, but we have to be solid on revenue. As a group, we have to get together and decide, first and foremost, before we decide what BOE gets, who gets decreases, what voter, none of that matters. If we cannot agree that we have $216 million, then we can't do anything. It is $216 million. I'm confident that number keeps coming up. The mayor's keeps changing. So, I have to go where it's been most consistent, and with the budget proposals that have come forward that I mentioned, it has been consistent. We must start at a revenue base of 216. That takes care of the enterprise funds being separated, it allows the revolving fund to be, start to be renewed, and all of that. If we can start from there, I think that's where the cooperation will happen. All of this, no tax increase, funding the BOE, will come, but right now, that's where the issue is, and I want to make sure the public understands that, because that's the big issue.
Okay, Linda Palermo.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. What I see going on before me with all the struggling going back between the mayor's office and the council is deplorable. We have to think of we, the little people. We can't put our hand in the cookie jar and take that cookie anytime we want. We have to wait till the cookie's there, and we have to afford it first. I agree with much of what Tina said, and I see it's an abuse of power on the mayor's part to keep doing what he's doing. I have to say, I'm glad he's leaving, and I hope we get somebody that will really do a much better job than what he's done. He doesn't seem to care about us. I have two bones to pick with regard to the budget. At the first budget hearing I was at, I saw something take place that was very deplorable in my eyes. I saw somebody that is working and getting $10,000 or $11,000 in a position as a selectman from Fairfield. He stood up here, he cheered and cheered and cheered and cheered and cheered to make sure the EMS got their money. I was very taken back by that. Most people know who that person is. He himself know who he is. He's sure of his money here also. He's getting a good bite from the taxpayers here in Stratford, and I think it was a very bad taste that he should be doing that since we're having a struggling time here. The seniors with regard to their tax rebate, last year, it was into January when we got our money. That money was supposed to be to us in December. It was allocated in the budget for last year. What happened to the money, does anybody know? We had to wait. It rolled over to when people would pay their next tax payment. And I just want to see things go good for we, the people. We are the backbone of this community. Mr. Harkins will be long gone. Thank you.
Okay, and that ends the public forum. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Stratford Town Council, and we will be having a recess. Before we have the ordinance adopting the annual operating budget, I would like, I understand that the town attorneys have been doing a substantial amount of work to, so we can understand what the default is if a budget is not passed. Can I ask one of the town attorneys to explain that thoroughly to all of us?
I'd be happy to. Under the Charter, Section 6.2.4, just to boil it down, the current department expenses will be based upon last year's budget plus the appropriation by the council has to account for continuing contracts. So, it's last year's budget plus continuing contracts, and that's consistent with state statute, Section 7-405A, which speaks to the appropriations specified on the budgetary line items for the previous fiscal year. So, the obligations can be met either by borrowing, in which case we'd have interest payment, which is due by the end of the year, tax bills, or we'd have to do layoffs.
The contractual obligations, Mr. Hodgson, how are layoffs in the contractual obligations when there are departments that have minimum force?
Well, we want to continue our workforce. We're envisioning that we're going to appropriate the money to do that. I don't think anyone's going to close the town down. I'm just saying that there is a radical alternative, which is, nothing's funded, but our charter provides for this contingency. If there is no budget in place by July 1, then it would basically default to last year's budget plus continuing contracts.
Last year's budgets plus continuing contracts. So, can I ask the administration to delineate what those continuing contracts are and what the cost of it would be?
Point of clarification, is this for just the municipal side, or does this include BOE?
It includes the board.
Thank you.
Can I ask the administration to inform us which continuing contracts this would include and how much the cost of that is, in addition to last year's budget?
So, this morning, I decided to work after we had a meeting with the attorneys on what our actual contractual obligations are. It would be for the 2018 budget cycle. I have a total for the town side around $3 million, and the same with the Board of Education. Those accounts include contract services, contract settlements, workers' comps, auto collision, bond principal payments, bond principal interest bands, which are bond anticipation notes, debt service for the energy performance, money we had, health insurance, 401A, longevity, unemployment, and pension contributions would be our contractual obligations for 2018.
Okay, Ms. Antezzo.
I, thank you. I have a question for the lawyer, the attorney. You said by July 1. In other words, it has to be passed as of June 30. Is that correct?
Charter says, "In the event an annual appropriations ordinance has not been passed by the commencement of the fiscal year, then these steps will be taken." So, I read it, the July 1 will have come and gone.
Thank you.
I just want to note, that does not mean that we're having a meeting June 30. Okay? Just to be clear. Are there any other questions on this topic to the attorney or to the administration? Mr. Kadim?
Yes, on both sides, work was being done. People went through a budget, made choices. Budgets were passed and then vetoed. That's why we're here. Had the budget just stood as it was passed, we wouldn't be here. So, the 30th or the 1st of July is coming, and hopefully, we can get a clear understanding of what we're doing with our budget, but twice the budget was vetoed, so it must not be that important to everyone. It wasn't like that last year. The budget passed, they got it, and everybody walked away in the sun. Now, they're not happy with the way the budget is structured, it keeps getting vetoed, so that's why we're here tonight instead of the second Monday, like we normally meet. So, hopefully, good luck will prevail, intelligence will prevail over silliness, and the charter as it stands is very important to have a charter, but both sides got to listen to the charter. Both sides, not just the people who put the budget separate from the mayor. The mayor also got to listen to the charter. It all goes together. We're all here to serve our town and be, how you say, good stewards of that. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Chase?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Well, first, a question to the mayor, if he doesn't mind. Does your budget meet the charter?
I'm sorry?
Does your budget meet the charter? I'm just referencing what Mr. Kadim is saying.
Yes.
It does? Oh, okay. Mr. Timiak, I have a question. You said while you're walking over that the contractual obligations amount to a little more than $3 million, if I understood you correctly?
On the town side, yes.
On the town side, okay.
To break that down a little bit, $2.2 million would go towards bond payments. That's bond principal payment, $555,000, bond interest payment, $995,000, the bond anticipation notes of $623,000, and the debt service for the energy performance bond, we took out of $28,000. That's a total of $2.2 million in contractually obligated bond increases over what we budgeted for 2017.
Okay. Thank you. You may want to stay there a second. If I understand what you're saying, then, we would be, if we don't pass a budget, we're going to be obligated to at least cover these contractual arrangements, agreements?
Yes.
That's correct?
We've been saying that all along, yes.
Okay. And that would be on top of last year's budget?
Yes. Those are, well, I just recited increases.
Okay, no, I got that. So, what would the mill rate be?
Jay Wahlberg is not here to calculate it.
39.93.
I threw out a number today. My estimate's between 39.90 and 40, based upon these.
So, it's assuming Ms. Manis is correct, at 39.93, that's more than the mayor's asking, which would be 39.7?
Yes.
So, what are we saving?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Manis?
So, if I'm looking at the budget that the mayor proposed way back, the mill rate was 39.93. The total required levy was 176,706. Last year's levy was 170. So, it's $6 million on both sides. It's pretty even. You're actually adding another $200,000 if we do not pass a budget. So, the difference between the mayor's budget and not passing a budget is $200,000, according to this. In addition, the Board of Education, which was at 106 last year and is at 109 this year, was scheduled to get $2.5 million. If under this, Mr. Timniak's numbers are correct, they would be getting $3 million. So, actually, it's more of an increase to the Board of Education. I'm sure your numbers were just a little bit off. The issue that I have, and the reason I won't be voting for this budget tonight, is because, again, the revenue lines are wrong, and I am adamant that the structure of the budget going forward has to be sound. I think people have done a lot of work. People fought very hard to make sure that our state statutes are followed with regards to the expenditures from the WPCA and the transfers. With regards to Railroad Fund, it's running out. You won't be here anymore, and the Railroad Fund won't have any more money in it. EMS, we've separated those accounts. We were, the budgets that have been put forward and vetoed, put our town on secure financial footing with regards to the structure of the budget. Do you not like the way things are funded? I understand that. However, the structure of the budget moving forward has to be correct, because I'm going to tell you, if a budget is passed that does not follow state statutes and continues to make illegal transfers, there will be lawsuits. If I have to fund them myself, you are not going to do this anymore. There is 200, there is $2.2 million that was robbed out of the reserve funds from the WPCA. We have a plan to pay that back, 202, no interest, over 10 years or however many years. It's a no-interest fund. That's a no-brainer, putting the money back, being able to say that EMS and the golf course is free of the town dipping into those funds. Yes, enterprise funds are meant to be enterprise funds, but we're never going to make those funds true enterprise funds if we continue to go into them. We can't do that. And with WPCA, it's totally illegal, and we've been told that over and over again. So, for the four folks that continue to follow the structures that are part of this mayor's budget and that are not financially sound, they are not legal, I'm asking you to really compromise on this. You need to start looking at that and really think, if you want to be named in a lawsuit, because I'm telling you, people are furious, and they're not furious with me. They are angry. They petitioned and they fought, and I'm just asking you to please think about the future of our town. We have a new mayor in November. We will probably have a brand-new council again in November at this point, and I'm telling you that the people coming in, we need to prepare them for the future. We can't hand them a mess. And guess what? I'm guilty from last year of not doing this work, of not making this happen, but we're wiser now. People expect more from us. They have brought these ideas forward. These aren't our own ideas. These ideas didn't come out of air. It's not the way Tina Manis decided the budget's supposed to go. It's all the people that I've met and talked to in this town. People want their children's education funded. I think clearly we know now, whether a budget passes or not, the contractual obligations are going to be, are going to be held. But what really bothers me is that in the public's perception, when those tax, many tax bills come out and they ask why, they're going to say, "Union contracts, everybody." And guess what's going to happen to our collective bargaining folks in DPW, police, fire, and our teachers' union? Guess what's going to happen? Guess what the public's going to think then? The anti-union sentiment in this town is real. People are starving. They are hungry, and they don't understand what's going on at the state level, and they don't understand what's going at the town level, and we are setting people up, and sadly, some of these people set themselves up. And this is sad. They're being used and abused, and that's what's going to happen, and I know it like I know my name. When those contract things come out, when those numbers come out and people say, "Well, where's the money going? We didn't approve a budget," that's what's going to happen, and I'm really upset about that, because ultimately, people on the ground, our folks, are working really hard, and it's really sad, and I'm putting it on record because I... And I'm putting it on record because I want District 10 to know what is going on. This is a disaster. It is really wrong and I will not approve a budget that does not have a strong financial structure. And this structure has been proven time and time again to be illegal and improper. Thank you.[995.61][995.61](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Timniak, since you were mentioned specifically in that comment, I'm going to ask if you wanted to respond to anything in particular?
Yeah, there were two things. The first one is, when we adopt last year's operating budget, that's what we're doing. We're adopting 2017's operating budget. So all of the savings and all the efficiencies we've found throughout the year and things which we incorporated in the 2018 budget are no longer there. So you're actually going to be overfunding some of the accounts. Some of the accounts are going to be underfunded. The second thing is, when you talked about the revenue, I am more than happy to sit down and go over the revenue lines and how, how it works, how the formula works with the money we receive. It's in the ordinance. It states exactly how much money has to be levied by taxation and how much money doesn't have to be levied by taxation. So that, the money, the $41 million, which is $46,461,000, that number's been relatively stable of money we received to the town, not including taxation. When you talk about the revenue increasing, it's the $173 million number, which, that's the one which fluctuates. It's not the 44.
Let me ask you.
No, no, I'm sorry. Mr. Timniak has the floor.
Yeah, I'm finished.
Are you finished? I'm going to ask you a follow-up question.
Ms. Manis?
For example, 01471-4313. I'm sorry, 4312, under revenue. Police court fines local. In 2014, actual was $12,898. In 2015, actual was $11,646. 2016, actual was $11,320. FY17 budgeted was $25,000. FY18 proposed budget is $60,000. What are you going to fine people for at the local level with police? What are we planning to, where are we finding that money? Like, these numbers, they're just inflated all over the place. And then some are decreased. Things with ECS funding, $21 million. And then the mayor proposes $19 million this year, when I know for a fact it's going to be $2 million more once the state budget passes. Why are we, why are we messing with this stuff? These numbers are inaccurate. I'm telling you, it's 216, it's been 216,3, over and over and over again. And you keep saying 219. And once you do the WPCA stuff, which kindly is on page 12, once you really set this up... Listen, I'm being real quiet. If you don't think I'm the dark horse behind a lot of this stuff, you, you're sorely mistaken because I've done this math and Ms. Antezzo has too. Once these numbers are fixed, once this stuff is done and it's all set correctly, the number becomes 216. And that is where we need to be. We cut $4 million from the budget in order to keep a flat tax. If I was working on 216, I could keep a flat tax, fund everything and be good. If we're going to go with 216, but we're not going with, I mean, with 219 or 220, I'd have more than enough money. The issue is not that. The issue is, is the foundation that we went to, which was a lot less. There's a lot less to work with in the budgets that we keep proposing because we settled all these illegal funds and transfers. We fixed it. And you don't agree. And I know, I know you guys don't agree. And this is where this disagreement lies. It's not in the Board of Ed, it's not in the tax raise, it's not in any of that. It's in that revenue line.
And I, I mean, I'll address this. At no time this year was there a town council budget workshop where you could have the police department come in here and tell you why that number is what that number is. So here we are, a month after the budget was due, and this is coming up today and you're expecting an answer. I've never heard that specific question before.
I'm just pulling that out of the...
And I can tell you that when you mentioned the ECS funding, I took the exact number the governor gave us in this year's budget. We got the number from CCM and we plugged those numbers in exactly as given to the town of Stratford.
Can, can I just point out with the ECS, just since, I believe that the state is now funding special ed, has increased its special ed grant a lot.
A lot.
To Stratford, rather than 2 million, it's over 9 million. And, and it decreased the ECS. So if you add those two numbers, you see a substantial increase in education funding from the state. I, I think we should take, I just want to ask Mr. Timniak one question. Has the auditors found, have they found anything illegal going on in the town's?
No.
Structure of the budget?
Everybody got a copy of the audit this year?
Yeah, I didn't notice anything illegal. I'd like to take another recess.
This question's...
Oh, Mr. Khan?
Question related to...
Oh, the administration? Okay.
Thank you. Put your mic down so you can hear you.
Thank you, Wally. Thank you. Mr. Timniak, you mentioned roughly $3 million on both the town and the BOE side. Would you have recorded the organization and object numbers for those?
I do, I have them here.
Is that something you can share with us and possibly an email?
Yes, I can. Because, I mean, just so you know, because each, I did this this morning, each line, each department has step increases already built in for their employees. I created a generic step increase line. Instead of mapping it all out, I would wait for Jay Wahlberg to come back to give me this specific on that. But I do have object codes and everything in here minus the step increases for all of the town employees.
Okay.
I put a generic number there. I had Ron Eng give me the best number he could today. So I put in, I put in a whole...
So we can get that one in short order and if we need something more granular, we can come back to you?
I mean, if the objective is to approve the mil rate or go off of last year's number, I'm confident in what we have right here.
It was more just to see which line items in the budget, which departments, is it contingency, is it debt, were affected by the 3+3?
Yep.
Thank you, Chris. Question for attorney. This is going back to that 6.2.4. It implies, I believe, that only the town council is authorized to make appropriations for expenses and the mayor has the authority to approve. And I'm thinking of the process. Let's say we do go into July and we do not have a budget and we have to make some decisions. Do we meet monthly and have monthly authorizations for wages, for equipment, for all the little details? And is it only the council that can make that authorization?
It's the council in conjunction with the mayor. It's the mayor's written approval, but the council is the appropriating body. But it is, it is in accordance with last year's budget. And I would agree, we would meet monthly. So you're talking about the third line of the charter provision, which says, "Shall make appropriations for current departmental expenses."
Current department expenses.
And then that's in accordance with last year's budget. So we're month-to-month in accordance with last year's budget.
But in terms of tax bills being sent out, the tax bills going out would have which mil rate on them? Because tax bills do need to go out, otherwise, my understanding is that the town runs out of money in August.
If we exercised that option to do that, it'd be, the mil rate would be based on last year's budget plus continuing contracts.
And that's what we're hearing is 39.9 something?
It's 30, probably 30.
39.9 something, which is higher than what is being proposed. Mr. Farrington Posner?
Just a quick, thank you, Madam Chair, just a quick question for Mr. Hodgson. If we were to continue moving forward with last year's budget, because of the value of the mil rate changing, would there end up being a surplus?
Yeah, 1.6 million.
I'm not sure.
There's a $1.6 million surplus.
That's, I'm sorry, Ms. Manis, the question was not to you. It was to Mr. Hodgson.
Well, to any takers on that one.
And to a financial expert.
I'm not sure, I don't, I'm not aware of how there would be a surplus. What is your rationale?
Well, with the value of the mil rate changing now, our revenues, how do I put this? With the value of the mil rate changing, it would actually end up giving us a surplus in revenues with, I believe, the mil rate, the value going higher. So we would end up having a surplus on top of what our revenues are currently. So where would that surplus end up going and how would that be allocated? That's my question.
I mean, if you have a surplus at the end of the fiscal year, you know, if you, if you brought in more money, which happens sometimes, than the budget, for instance, you had more than anticipated tax payment percentage, more money came in, or more people bought new cars or additional cars, you can have additional money coming in, or the state of Connecticut gave you more money. That wouldn't be spent, it would be held as a surplus, basically. And when you come to budget time next year, you'd make a determination what to do with that surplus, whether you'd retain that money for the next fiscal year or use a portion or all of it to, to reduce amount to be raised by taxation for the next, the...
So would that go into our, would that go into our reserves that have been depleted by the mayor over the years?
That would, that's a better question for the CFO, where officially he would put that, whether it goes into the unappropriated surplus in a reserve fund, in a, formally where he would put that would be his question. But that money would be booked someplace. It would be booked and available someplace to use if, if you decided as the budget-making body.
So, okay, I just heard...
That answers that.
Yeah, thank you. I just heard Ms. Manis mention that it's 1 point through the chair.
1.6 million, which would lower the total millions to 4.4 million, which would lower the mil rate again, to much lower because now you're looking at a 1.6 drop. If you were to allocate those unrestricted funds, they go into an unrestricted fund balance, according to folks that I've spoken to, it goes to an unrestricted balance fund. And that, that balance, that 1.6 million for the increase of revenue from the mill can be used. However, the mayor and the council, according to charter, thinks that...
So that, through the chair, that could actually lower our mil rate from the 39.93 or 9.8 that is currently being spoken about. Okay, thank you.
I, I just want to say, Jay, our friend, our financial director is not present and he would be the person who makes the ultimate determination on the exact figures. And as Mr. Timniak said, the figures were round, rounded, that they were not exact because we don't have the, we don't have our...
So through the chair, that mil rate that we were just given, that possible round the number 39.93 between 30.9 and 9.8, isn't actually accurate because of the surplus that we would have with the change of the value of the mill?
I don't know what surplus, I mean, I heard Ms. Manis speak, but I would wait until Mr. Wahlberg could give us actual financially sound advice.
Thank you.
A point of clarification...
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Point of clarification, I have an email from you, Madam Chair, that states that you understood there was a surplus when you wanted to hold the mil rate study at 38.99 when your math was bad. I have an email stating that you understand there was additional revenue in the surplus. So you completely understand. I can show you the email if you'd like.
I did receive that email as well. I have it.[1729.91][1729.91](APPLAUSE).
I don't know what they're talking about. Mr. Mayor?
Regarding any, any surplus that may exist into the next year, we still don't know what the state numbers are, whether they're going to be the same, higher or lower. So if they're lower, obviously you'd need to make up some money over the year to address it. But certainly if it's more, then you would have a surplus. Chances are, go to fund balance. I think that's what your finance director would recommend, seeing we have a low fund balance right now. But again, that would be the decision of the council, where the money would go if there is any surplus.
Is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet who'd like to speak before we take a recess?
Recess?
Yep. Okay, we're going to call, I'm calling a recess.
Why?[1773.01][1773.01](LAUGHING).
recess, is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Speaker, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.